From each of you to our morning commission meeting proceedings, it's a blessing to be here. We have with us the Reverend Eddie Stith, the Minister, Associate Minister at the First Assembly of God, who will come now and lead us in our invocation. Following the invocation, we'll be led in the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Harvey. Let's all stand together, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good to be with you today. Let's pray. Father, I thank you for today. Lord Jesus, we're here not by chance, but by appointment. Father, you've allowed us to gather here, Lord, and I thank you for each commissioner, Father, that you placed in that seat. Father, I thank you that you give them wisdom that's beyond their years, beyond their comprehension. And Father, as they are leading this county into the next generation, God, I pray for the favor of God over their lives, over their decisions. And Father, I pray that you would just allow this county, Father, to come back to life, God, just like the story in the Bible where you breathe on dry bones and cause it to come to life, God. I thank you that this county is living, that this city is thriving. And Father, I thank you that you place these leaders in position for this time to lead us into the next generation, Father, to prosper and to grow and to see you glorified in all that they do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. Commissioners, each should have received and reviewed the minutes from the March 10, 2015 regular meeting proceedings. What is your pleasure?
I move approval. Second.
Proper motion and a second for approval of the March 10th meeting proceedings. Further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you again. Item three proclamation, we have representatives that are prepared to come and receive the proclamation recognizing April as Community Anti-Drug Awareness and Unity Month. Those that are present, please come forward. Thank you for being here. It is indeed a blessing to have such fine representation this morning and community leaders that have come to cheer with us, not just for the receiving of this proclamation, but those that are where the rubber meets the road, that are personally and corporately working to make our community a better place. Citizens, commissioners, join in with me as I present this proclamation for your consideration and approval. Putnam County Proclamation number 2015 dash 25, declaring April as Community Wide Anti-Drug and Alcohol Abuse Addiction Awareness and Combat Month in Putnam County. Whereas the United States is experiencing a drug and alcohol addiction epidemic like never before, and whereas the United States has become a society more tolerant of addiction, oftentimes disregarding the devastating effects that alcohol and drug addiction has upon our nation, state, counties, and municipalities. Whereas Hollywood contributes to this tolerance by continuing to influence not only our youth, but people of all ages by glamorizing drug and alcohol addiction in its television shows, movies, and commercials. And whereas Putnam County is listed among Florida's most violent counties in the state, due in large part to widespread drug and alcohol abuse. Whereas the number of deaths in Putnam County as a result of drug overdoses is unfathomable, but nonetheless an unfortunate reality. And whereas Putnam County's prescription drug, illicit drug, and alcohol abuse issues are widespread, snaring people of all ages and walks of life, adversely affecting countless families, communities, and neighborhoods. And whereas the effects of this national epidemic has reached Putnam County to the point that it is imperative for our entire community to unite and support each other in combating this detrimental challenge that affects most, if not all, of our lives in some manner. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of Commissioners that the month of April 2015 is hereby declared as Community Wide Anti-Drug and Alcohol Abuse Addiction Awareness and Combat Month in Putnam County. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens, families, church leaders, and congregations, local government leaders, local county and city law enforcement, and representatives of our local mental health and drug coalitions are hereby urged to attend and participate in the upcoming 2015 U-Turn Anti-Drug and Alcohol Dependent Community Outreach to be held on Saturday, April 18, 2015, at the John Theobald Sports Complex, 120 Carter Road, Palatka, from 11 o'clock a.m. to 4 o'clock p.m. Commissioners, I'd like for this proclamation to be presented for your consideration.
For motion, for approval, second.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Libo, second by Commissioner Harvey. Further discussion. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Congratulations.
Mr. Kason, we want to thank you for leaving the day this year. Last year, I know it was at the same time as the Catfish Festival.
That's right.
For we commissioners, it was a real hustle to get.
Yes, sir, I'm sure it was.
Yeah, so this is going to be good. We can spend the day with you.
Right, we appreciate you coming and sharing with us last year's U-Turn.
Yes, sir. Great event, very good event.
Well, thank you. I know most of you, but for the record, I'm Casey Kason. I'm a Palatka native, local businessman, and U-Turn Chairman. And I'd like to introduce those people that stand with me today. Starting from over here, we have Melissa Ray, her and her husband Jeremy head up the Celebrate Recovery Group here in Palatka. They meet every Monday night at 6:30, 6:30. Then we have Ed Killabrew, who was instrumental in heading up an effort to put together a pamphlet of resources and help where people, you know, can go to get help when they're struggling with drug and alcohol addiction problems. And I believe that's used by the court system, right? Yes, sir. And then we have Ms. Helen Brown, Ms. Kim Hughes, Ms. Robin Simons, and my wife Lynette, and they're all fellow church members and U-Turn supporters. Of course, we have Shannon Byrd.
She.
She falls into that category, of course, y'all know her. We have Chris Glent. He's the Program Director with Putnam County Community Alliance, and he's been a great supporter of U-Turn. We have Jared Guy, and he's with the Putnam County Sheriff's Office and also works with the Drug Court. And Jared is not afraid of hard work. He helped us with that big 80 by 100 tent last year. When we thought we had no help, he rounded up a posse and came down there and worked himself and helped us get it done, so we appreciate him. And then we have Pastor Ray Johnson, our pastor at Southside Baptist Church, and Brother Bob Mangum, who's also with our church and heads up the Penn Isle Baptist Children's Department. Now I'd like to give you a brief update about U-Turn since we were here about a year ago. There is currently a hotel under construction where our event was held at Riverfront Park. We were there in 2013 and 2014, and now there's no room at the riverfront. So we have moved the event to one of your facilities, which is the John Theobald Sports Complex. I'm happy to report that Ms. Angie Wisnig, Director of Parks and Recreation, has been very helpful and cooperative in accommodating us. U-Turn 2015 Community Outreach, now in its fifth year, is an anti-drug and alcohol addiction community outreach and will be held Saturday, April 18, from 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. Our sponsorship efforts are nearing end this year, so we can switch gears to put on the event. As of this morning, U-Turn will be sponsored by two corporate sponsors, 10 churches, 29 businesses, and 38 individuals. It takes a lot to put this on, and we're trying to establish to the point of being able to help someone who wants to make a U-Turn, but needs help with financial resources to be able to do it. We are still accepting sponsorship if anyone would like to contribute. U-Turn Community Outreach addresses drug and alcohol prevention awareness, offers referrals and help, and most of all, hope for those in need. There will be kids' activities, education and information dramas, and testimonies from two Teen Challenge groups, and from our local Celebrate Recovery Group headed up by Jeremy and Melissa Ray. Special guest speakers, live music with the band Cadence, free food, drinks, snow cones, popcorn, lots of door prizes, and fun for the whole family. The entire event is all free to all who attend. I want to share with you a testimony from a Teen Challenge student that was written right after U-Turn last year. It reads as follows. This was my second year being a part of the U-Turn Outreach in Putnam County. In 2012, I attended one of their events, which was held at my home church, Southside Baptist. When I went, I had no idea what to expect, nor did I realize that God would use this event to plant a seed in my heart. As the ladies from the Davy Teen Challenge got on the platform, began to minister, and pour their hearts out, I knew in that moment, I wanted what they had, and that was Jesus. Almost a year later, in January of 2013, I found myself on my phone with Teen Challenge in South Florida. I had finally hit rock bottom, and I was more than ready for change. Exactly a week after my first call to the program, I was on my way by train to Davy, Florida. Now here I am, 15 months later, with an amazing work God has started in my life. Being a part of this event has been such a tremendous blessing. God reached down, pulled me out of my mess, put me in a position to share the hope and love that Jesus Christ has offered. God used U-Turn to change my life, and now I'm able to be a part of this great ministry and offer the hope to others in Putnam County that was freely offered to me. Signed, Lauren. And Lauren is a local girl who was raised and grew up in Putnam County. She successfully completed the Teen Challenge program and is now attending the Teen Challenge Emerging Leaders College in Jessup, Georgia. U-Turn is making a difference in the lives of others. There are many others in Putnam County and surrounding areas who have turned their lives around and are now living clean and sober, happy and healthy life, including my own daughter, Shanna, who will co-emcee this year's U-Turn event. Lastly, I regret to report that there have been some who have fallen victim to the destruction of drug addiction with their life since the last U-Turn, and that is why we continue to reach out to the community and letting them know that we care about them and there's a hope and a future for them that's free from the bondage of addiction. That is why we thank you for adopting this proclamation and supporting our efforts. Everyone benefits when somebody who is headed down a path of destruction makes a U-Turn in their life. On behalf of U-Turn and all these who stand with me, we thank you.
Thank you.
God bless.
Thank you.
Okay, this is Edie Wilson. She's recently formed Clint's Crusade for Drug Prevention, and the other fellow, can't we? Okay. 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 Edie Wilson.
Again, we applaud and salute your leadership there. We know that together, each achieve more, and your labor is not in vain, what you all are doing in this community. You're uniting the community for this common cause and this great need that we have, and you also are demonstrating that what an individual's past has brought to them is not their destiny. And thank you so very much for what you're doing. God bless you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if anybody wants to join us, you're more than welcome.
Super. Again, we're grateful for your presence. As we continue on this morning's agenda, we move to the section of our agenda for public comments. And again, this portion of the agenda is designed specifically to give our citizens the opportunity to bring matters to our attention. It is not reasonable for our citizens to expect that the board will engage and debate our deliberations about issues that we do not have prior information on. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment cards are located at the back of our meeting room on both sides at the entrance and should be submitted to our deputy clerk at the right of the podium prior to the meeting. I will also emphasize the importance of the pledge of civility. We are committed, as your legislators, to be respectful of you. We ask that you reciprocate with us even when we disagree, and I ask that you direct all of your comments through the chair to this commission, and we will have the appropriate person to respond, and at all times, we will avoid personal attacks. We will not stop individuals from talking. What we will do is call for point of order if you are exceeding your minutes, and when we are responding to any citizen requests, that does not count as a part of your three minutes. Parliamentary procedures will be followed. Thank you so much. We have that understanding. Ms. Elizabeth Bacon Smith, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and good morning.
Good morning. Elizabeth Bacon Smith, 203 Morrison Road, Interlock in Florida, 32148. I'm just briefly here to visually acquaint you with this folder, this color, this thickness, that I'm going to end up putting in each of your boxes. And I know that your plates are overflowing right now with Rodman and Better Place Plan, so I won't even bother doing it until after the election. But the point of the information in this is just to ask you to go through it. My intention is to help normalize the idea of technology regarding municipal solid waste. I'll just briefly give you the headlines of each of these articles. This one is Canada's Best Kept Secret: 14 Cool and Innovative Clean Tech Companies. Okay, that's what that looks like. Latin America Turns to Waste to Energy for Power Generation. Third, Landfill Gas-to-Energy Project for Energy in Mexico. How Mexico Has Turned Garbage Into Fuel. And this is Waste to Energy Burns Bright in World's Waste Projects. Northern Ireland, North America, Siemens Control in U.K. And at the bottom, I just put a note that there's also an article somewhere on this site, and the site is Waste Management World, that speaks to processing incinerator waste ash into energy through a gasification process in China. So the idea of all of this is that it is happening, it's happening widely, it's part of the 21st century, and it's a way to leave a better place for our descendants in Putnam County without the Better Place Plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bacon Smith. Mr. Rick Haven, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've got a brief statement to read. I'll be within my three minutes, I hope. The county jail here is so crowded that some inmates sleep on the floor, while the other jail, a few miles down the road, sits empty. There's no more money for the second one anymore, the county roads need paving, the tax collector needs help, there's no money for either of them. There's no money for a lot of things here, not since the county went bankrupt last fall. There's no money for necessary sheriff's patrol, as a third of that force has been laid off. No overtime paid at the courthouse, none for the crews to repair roads, to mow rightways, or pick up roadkill, not even when, as happened recently, an unlucky cow was hit just outside of town. This is life today in Jefferson County, Alabama, bankrupt USA. For all the talk in Washington about taxes and deficits, here is a place where government finance and government itself has simply broken down. The county, with a population of 658,000, which includes the city of Alabama, is drowning under $4 billion of debt. The legacy of a big sewer project and corrupt financing dealings that sent 17 people to prison. However, this could be the story of Putnam County. The commission's reckless borrowing and spending, together with the violations of Florida sunshine laws, could put you B.O.C.C. members in jail while we, the taxpayers, are left to figure out a way out of the debt you've placed us in. Being the poorest county in Florida is not based so much on our incomes, but on the debt that you have placed upon the taxpayers. Currently, Putnam County is looking at $44,766,999 of debt, or $623 for every man, woman, and child living in Putnam County. You claim that you must borrow to gain matching grant funds from the state of Florida or federal government, acting as though those grant funds are free money. It's not free money. And those grant funds come from increases in our vehicle registrations, our driver's license, hunting and fishing licenses, insurance, and any hidden number of taxes on our phone and utility bills. We, the taxpayers, are equally broke, many on the verge of bankruptcy ourselves due to the increase in unemployment and many business closings. All the while, you continue your taxes to pay for extravagances such as bike paths across Memorial Bridge and buying swamp land and other recreational facilities that will never be built. Our tax assessor continues to remove acreage from the tax rolls for conservation and greenways, increasing the burden on those of us still paying taxes. It is time the county lives within its means to 2012 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report complains of limited and diminishing revenue sources. If that is a belief, then do something about it. The B.O.C.'s theory of attracting business and residential is building infrastructure for the future. How about lowering our taxes to attract the growth and pay for the infrastructure improvements through impact fees? However, those impact fees must be spent in the areas they were collected for the purpose they were collected and not merely placed in the general fund for B.O.C.'s pet projects like bike paths and hacking trails.
Please summarize.
Pardon?
Please summarize.
The Better Place Plan currently has a debt of $9,526,900. We, the taxpayers, must vote no on extending the Better Place Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haven.
Comment if I could, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Haven, I just want to point out some clarification on the bike trail and the purchase of the nine-mile swamp area was not done with county funds. Thank you, that's all.
Okay.
I disagree with you.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's not true.
Mr. Haven, you made your statement. He made his, the record reflects those comments. Thank you so very much. Ms. Faith Barkman, you're our next speaker.
Thank you very kindly. Okay, thank you very kindly.
Morning. I came before you two weeks ago, and now I have all the facts for you. That does not count the faculty, the staff, and the school buses. County Road 315, when it rained yesterday, the cracks were open like this. The students when high school gets out, they cross the road, they go to the library, they go to McDonald's. What happens if one of them fall in the crack? All of you sitting up there are responsible for all these lives on 315. I was told last night at a meeting that you guys had decided a workshop, you're going to do it. Is this true?
I'm not sure your question.
Is 315, all of 315 now on the agenda to start doing something about? I was told a meeting last night it was.
315 has been on our agenda all along, and obviously, we can't move projects as fast as we desire, but we will be having transportation workshop at 2 o'clock this afternoon, and I'm sure we will discuss 315 in that conversation.
And one other question. You promised me two weeks ago we were going to actually have the definition of the MSBU. Did you get that for me?
I promised you two weeks ago.
Mm-hmm, that we could talk about it today, or it would be on the agenda or something, but it's not there.
No, ma'am, I don't recall that request for this to be on the agenda.
Okay.
What, I mean, you wanted just the definition of MSBU?
Okay, okay, last night, there was a meeting at the Interlock and Library. I speak up at all the meetings because all the people behind me are in an MSBU. No, I'm not, but I was at the beginning.
Okay.
And even the man that you had come out there and speak last night did not know what the MSBU was.
I didn't send a man anywhere last night.
The guy from the Oversight, Better Business, whatever it is.
Flag, nor this commission did not send.
Well, he was there, and he gave the same video I gave here. So he asked questions. I asked, please, for somebody to give everybody in the public a full definition of what the MSBU is and why the people can't get out. That's all I've asked.
Why people can't get out?
Why can't we get out of it, the people that live out there, and get their payment? That's all I want to know.
Okay, anytime a person engaged in a contractual relationship, you know, you just don't decide, you know, to get out of it, and it covers an entire area. We can have this discussion, there's no reason for us not to have this discussion. We have staff members who work with MSBU's every single day, and so it's not necessary for us to give a personal definition. We know, again, the acronym is Municipal Service Benefit Unit. And we also know that the specific area that these funds come from, that there is regulations that causes us to have restrictions, just with any other plan that we have. There are individuals in our community who seem to think that we can do anything we want to do with monies. All of the monies that come in have certain restrictions. A general fund, obviously, is the broadest definition of funding, but it's not like, again, we just decide, you know, one by one exactly what we're going to do. We're properly following procedures here, and I ask all of our citizens, please, when you see a process and you don't understand the process, seek additional information and understanding. If you do understand the process and it appears to be anything that's happening that is outside of the parameters of your understanding, by all means, give us the opportunity. We will have a, what we call, the state definition, or the appropriate definition of the MSBU, and I'll make sure you have that this afternoon.
Please, because that's what's happening, because you don't understand. The part that I live in, I'm not in it anymore, but I was.
Okay.
The problem I have also is when I was on that board, I found a $22,000 mistake. So do you, as all the board members, overlook all this money that you're paying out to the two contractors? Because at that time, I didn't even know who the man was sitting next to me, it happened to be. I'm not going to say his name, but he had to correct it and give us back the $22,000. So I'm very curious, as to each one of you, if you have it in your areas, are you actually looking at the figures, making sure that it's going where it's supposed to go?
Okay, we do have what I call a check and balance system. We are reviewing our reports as they are presented. All of us are out in the field, visiting various areas. And when I say that, we're required by law to live in a district, but every single one of us were elected at large for this county, and all of us. We don't get to a district line and turn around and go the other way. We are all countywide, and we're doing our very best. There are some citizens who may know one commissioner better than they know another commissioner, and we're not insulted or offended, you know, there, so it's crisscrossed there. We have very competent individuals that are working in finance, both our assistant administrator as well as the CFO for the clerk's office, and anything that appears to be a discrepancy, by all means, don't hesitate, and please, be as outspoken as you normally are and bring it to our attention, and we will thoroughly get to the bottom of it.
Okay, well, that's how I had caught it, because where I live, I see all the trucks that pull the clay out. I also see all the stone trucks, and that's how I had caught it. So I'm just calling to your attention because of all the people that live behind me, they just know they paid it. They never realized, they could never get. They never realized they could never get dirt to payment. They now do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barkman. Thank you very much. Mr. Neil Letts, you're the next speaker.
Yesterday, you're aware I was at the meeting, which brought up the point which I keep trying to reiterate it. We're paying one thousand dollars a ton for our recycling program. Going on with that, I think our recycling program is a result of a cultural change that occurred between the time I was born and most of you were born, and so it's sort of none of our fault. I mean, we've got all these new plastics and new papers, which are new from the standpoint that they didn't exist before about fifty years ago. We don't know how to handle them. Now, in two thousand and six, I proposed a program, which Ms. Harris is aware of. We have basically six plastics, of which four we could recycle with the equipment we have, with just a matter of scheduling trucks. Each of our neighborhoods have two trucks going by our houses every week. Now, the recycling truck is almost empty, and it collects two percent of our municipal waste, and the compactor trucks compare the, collect the other ninety-eight percent. Now, this may be an error due to solid waste coming from brush and trees, et cetera, that are hauled in independently. Recycling plastics is very easy. All you have to do is look at the bottom of the container, and it has a triangle with a number one, two, three, four, five, six. Number four is shopping bags, which ought to have legislation from this commission to outlaw them in this county, because they're filling up the ocean with thousands of miles of floating refuse. Styrofoam is ninety-eight percent air, so that's a big problem, and we, and nobody wants to recycle this stuff. Now, when it comes to papers, papers fall into the ink-only or knowing category, which is office paper, newspapers, and telephone books and other books without covers. The second has a clay coating, and it makes it shiny, and that puts it into a second category, which is our cereal boxes and our cardboard boxes with shiny things on it. The third category is the worst, because, most difficult to recycle. It comes out of containers that come out of a refrigerator or cooler. Now, we don't have to buy a penny's worth of equipment to handle what we got. We just gotta schedule it. We don't have, we should get rid of the blue boxes because they don't cover up the paper especially. The, we could keep our thirty-five gallon trash cans. We could pick them up on the same day, and since we only have eight categories, and some of them don't have to be picked up every week, we can pick these up in a single sorted type before the curb. We have seventy thousand recyclers in this county, and we, not six at Waste Pro. So we can pick them up on a schedule with the same equipment we have. We don't have to spend a penny for that. Now, the only thing is, what are you gonna do with the plastics and the paper? The paper, again, I forgot one of them, is corrugated cardboard, which, packing.
Please summarize.
This one more thing. We could pick them up. You can store them in containers that are the universal shipping containers that are eight by eight by forty. They could be purchased for two thousand dollars a piece. You can get the chassis to haul them around with a semi-trailer for five thousand dollars, which you're talking about, if you bought twenty, twenty times two, I think, is forty, that's trailers, forty thousand dollars. You can buy three of these five thousand dollar trailers to haul the containers with, and we can store this stuff at the landfill. Now, you fill the trailers with compacted paper or shredded paper, whichever is the cheapest and the best way to do it. We don't need to spend hardly anything to take a one miserable, single-stream, thousand-dollar ton program and turn it into a real recycling program. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Letts. Our next speaker is Carolyn Swope. Please come forward. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Carolyn Swope, one thirty-seven Oak Crest Drive, Interlaken. I'm coming to speak on the Better Place Plan a little bit. Just a comment on this report submitted by Mr. Smith, Tim Smith, last, last week. I, I looked it over a little bit, and there's things that are missing that are rather important to me, to know where the money's going. For example, I'm just gonna say that one little item on the first page, two thousand and four, there's a senior citizen center with Armstrong Contracting at seventy-six thousand dollars in sum, and then in two thousand and five, it says Senior Citizen Center, same contractor, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, and it looks like the same account. But the question is, where was that Senior Citizen Center? If we want to look at the report and see where the money has gone, we'd like to know where it was located. And as far as the Better Place Plan, I don't know all the figures correctly, but this is what I've got. We collected six hundred, sixty-one million dollars in the, in the tax, and the five cities share seventeen percent, which is approximately ten million, three hundred and seventy thousand. Our debt, I've heard it's thirteen point five million, and then Rick Haven said nine million. So let's go with the nine million. If, well, everybody likes free money. I know that. I mean, you do. But the cities are getting ten million dollars, and we have nine million dollars in debt. Why? Why are the cities getting all this money? I know, again, it's wonderful that they get the free money, but if we hadn't paid the cities, we wouldn't have the nine million in debt. So if, so why are we borrowing money to pay off the cities? I have kids, and if I wanted to make nice things for them, I could go into debt and give them money, but that wouldn't be a wise thing to do. The buck has to stop somewhere. And the last thing is, how many cents per gallon does Putnam County get besides the one cent Better Place Plan? Can anybody answer that?
What is your question, Ms. Swope?
We get more than the Better Place Plan on your gasoline tax. Is that correct?
The gasoline tax and the Better Place Plan, sir, tax is totally separate.
I know, they're separate, but other than the one cent, how much of the regular tax, gasoline tax, does the Putnam County get?
What is the total amount of the gas tax?
No, let's say, is it five cents per gallon, two cents per gallon? That's all I want to know. Does anybody know?
Yes, ma'am. Our finance leaders know.
Well, how much is it?
Six.
So you get six cents a gallon already.
Well, it's more than that.
Nine total.
Yes.
It's based on the second penny, the fifth penny.
Okay, okay. So it's either six or then maybe nine cents a gallon. So that's a lot of money you already have. That's why a lot of us want you, us to study the Better Place Plan. We don't want to vote for it right now because we don't know where the money's going. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Swope. Again, all of those in county government who works with finances would love to sit with you one-on-one, and all of your concerns can be vetted in a greater degree, more so than during our public comments season. Tim Ho, Mr. Tim Ho-Teling, please come forward.
Pardon me, I'll start. I had a long conversation with Larry Gass yesterday after we left the transportation thing, and I spent a long afternoon giving you guys something more to read.
Thank you.
I know that you're just running out of things to do. We won't see you here tomorrow or this afternoon. I've come before you several times suggesting that we need to look at, y'all need to look at the nuts and the bolts level of the landfill, what's going on and how it's done, and, and perhaps consider the business model. I attempted to get better information than this. Over a period of time, I couldn't. I've gone to many of the meetings of the Citizens Committee and watched what they've done, and they've had their hands full looking in the, you know, basically in the cloud, really big stuff. Yesterday, we learned, or I learned, again, that you're getting ready to rebid the Waste Pro garbage collection process. To me, it was just, it's just a very, very timely moment to stop and take a breath and take a look and consider, do you want, y'all want to go down the road for another, what, seven years we're looking at and some extensions without having an opportunity to see if we can do something more efficiently? I got on the computer and went to the Lexington County, South Carolina website, and the state of South Carolina has a compiled, pardon me, compiled report, which I'm sure Florida also has, also talking about all the recycles and all of the landfills and all that terminology I didn't want to learn. You can recycle, they seem to recycle, their facility, because it's physically laid out, facilitates recycling, and it removes it out of the waste stream. Bottom line on this paper I gave you, you're getting ready to bid out, sending all these garbage trucks out to everybody's house. Why? That costs a whole bunch. Lexington County has an embellishment of your composting stations, your service stations, forget what you call them, and in each case, they have containers for everything, for steel, for aluminum cans, for newspaper, for cardboard, for motor oils, environmental-friendly. Yeah, I, I've changed, I still have two containers of motor oil in, in the back of my shed from changing my car. I have no idea where in Putnam County you can get rid of it.
The landfill.
Landfill.
There's no, there's, you, you drive in the landfill, and there's overflowing containers of plastic bottles, and I'm not trying to be nasty. I just, there's, there's no place to, there's no, no way for me to know where, other than, I guess, talk to the guy, oh yeah, the big tank behind the, the entrance. But it doesn't encourage participation. These service centers that are set up conveniently, eleven of them around that county, which is awful lot like this county. Anybody that wants to do any, any, any of these folk that harp on, on recycling, they can go and recycle to their heart's content, and the rest of them go about their business, and it saves money. The, and, and, yeah, I see it blinking. Bottom line being, you might want to consider business models. Your business model's got us paying four hundred and fifty dollars a year, whatever it is. I have the last page is the tax bill from a house that we lived in that had a thousand more square feet of, of area, and I paid forty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents a year in landfill fees. You might want to consider alternatives before you, you go out there. That's all.
Thank you for your research. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Could Mr. Gass respond to his, the recycling of the oil issue and where that's located and how often that's pumped, and just answer some of those questions? Clear that up.
Yes, if anybody pulls out to the landfill and goes to the scale house and says we have the oil to recycle or household hazardous materials to dispose of, they will direct them to a drop-off area if they need to keep their container, say, like they put it in a five-gallon gasoline can that they wanted to keep. We'll get a supervisor that will go unlock the locked-in area where it can be placed into the main storage tank that gets serviced on a regular basis, pumped out by the company that recycles the motor oil.
Thank you very kindly.
And that also happens at the convenience centers, too.
The convenience centers, yes.
Right.
We're a little limited there because we don't have a huge containment system. If somebody brings in something that's like a leaking container of pesticides, we'll turn them away from the convenience center because we don't have a, a real, secure-type place for anything that would be in, in bad shape, where we do have the sealed, covered floors and everything at the landfill.
Okay. Thank you.
And the county, they also, you have to go to the landfill if you've got real serious stuff like, like that. But they have fifty-gallon drums with funnels, and you just pour the oil in it, and a separate container for oil-filled plastic can, the containers. And so they, the people do all the work, but you don't have to pay somebody to unlock a lock and, and, and do whatever.
There are best practices, models out there.
Yes, sir.
From all of these areas, and, and, and we are, contrary to some people's belief, we are doing our homework, and this commission does not set out to agitate or aggravate. Everybody's not going to be pleased at the end of the day, but when we go home at the end of the day, we want to know that we've given our best. So thank you so much. Mr. Robert Bly, you're next.
I've got some things to hand out to you.
Thank you so much, sir.
What I came here to, my name's Robert Bly, one sixteen Sand Lake Drive, Pomona Park, Florida. What I came here to talk about today is ordinance number two thousand two dash thirty-three.
Okay.
That is the existing ordinance for the Better Place Plan. Now, if you look at your sheet that I handed to you, you'll see number eight, Oversight Committee. And if you read that, you'll notice that the words, "This committee shall study the project list with the goal of advising how to efficiently construct and complete such implementation," oh, such projects. "The committee shall prepare and present to the board a report on the implementation, progress, status, and completion of all such projects, including a summary of the finances undertaken, funds extended, expended, and planning, design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction activity as of the reporting date." Now, on the new ordinance that's been distributed to be voted on April seventh, the words, "This committee shall study the project list with the goal of advising how to efficiently construct and complete such projects," and the words, "The implementation, progress, status, and completion of all," and the words, "And planning, design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction activity," are removed. When the Better Place Plan ballot hearing was held, the, the wording that was changed on the ballot was given to us one-lined so that we could see the corrections and what was added and what was removed. There was never anything passed out about the Oversight Committee wording that had been removed. There is no document that I can find that shows that wording was removed, and yet, the, I would think, Mr. Jones, the Better Place Plan Chairman, would say that he never saw that wording. As a matter of fact, when he was here before you last time, he said that they never had any oversight as a Better Place Plan Committee. They would only look at projects to make sure that they matched with the project list after the fact. after the fact. And as you've said, the Board of County Commissioners makes up their mind as to what the Better Place Plan funds are used for because you're better positioned to do that and you didn't think that they would be able to handle that much work. So I would like to know who changed the wording and when that happened.
Okay, Mr. Bly, I, I really regret that Mr. Jones is not here to speak for himself concerning what you say he said because I have been in multiple meetings with Mr. Jones, have met with the Better Place Oversight Committee and their quarterly meeting with the reporting that they have done and that's not the story that I'm getting from Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones is the chair, no different than Carl Flag being the chair of this group. I don't meet with this group before or after meetings, we don't have any discussions and that's why sometimes our debates are some, most time healthier from time to time because we're not angry or upset, troubled or disturbed with each other, but we're trying to get our point over. And I don't know of any rule or regulation change there, the committee is not charged. It's like, again, every one of these elected officials have a different area of expertise. All of our citizens who volunteer their time have a different area of expertise and they do depend on the individuals who are charged with the auditing process of the Better Place Plan as well as other budget items. And so I, I, I say to you and I say to all of our citizens who exemplify and share great concerns about the, the funding and how the funds are spent, it is better for the conversation to be held with our finance officers who can get all the way down to the nuts and the bolts. I will not attempt to, to answer questions line item by line item there. I go to them to make sure I have the facts and so I encourage all of our citizens to do the same. So as it relates to an ordinance change, council, do you have any information on the ordinance for the Oversight Committee being changed?
Yes, sir. It was changed. We, I presented a draft to the board, it was discussed at the board meeting, Mr. Jones was aware of those changes. I think he, a recollection is, he kind of indicated his disagreement with some of those changes, but the board, what, what was changed was it was drafted to reflect what I understood more of what the committee was doing rather than what this language said they should be doing. We discussed at the board meeting, the board approved it.
Correct.
It has nothing to do with the referendum language also, by the way.
I just wanted you to, to say that for the record.
I do not think, I, I don't remember, but I do not think there was a red line or, or a marked copy. I, I don't think we had one of those.
Okay. When it, when it was all said and done, the revisions to the Oversight Committee was based upon what the intent was from the beginning and what the reality is, is as it relates to what that Oversight Committee has been charged with. There's nothing in the language that has precluded or caused anybody on the Oversight Committee to be hindered in any way, shape, form, or fashion from due diligence, getting all of the information that they need, but as it relates to preparation of reports and things of that nature, those are staff issues and that's, that's why it's like it is.
Yes, we'll just disagree on that.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Bly. Ms. Janet Smith, you're next, please come forward.
Morning.
Good morning. Regarding that discussion.
Okay, state your name and address for the record.
Janet Smith, sixty Carefree Drive, Willacca. The discussion you just had, if you go back and you look at the county video of February twenty-fourth, Mr. Ron Jones does disagree publicly. And it was after a discussion saying that he thought that a good standing committee, a steering committee would be involved in issues as important as debt and he was objecting to removing those words that had been in place for all these years.
Thank you for your opinion, Ms. Smith, you may continue.
Now, there are many out here wearing no buttons this morning and you should know that the reason that they are, some of these people would actually have voted yes. What we object to is the rush process and the fallacy of the information that we have. The meeting that was held on, in February that was called an emergency meeting was not an emergency. That ordinance does not sunset until December thirty-first, twenty seventeen, two years and seven or so months. We had time to get this right. You guys chose to make a political decision to rush this ahead instead of letting the people be part of the decision process and go through that wording and understand it before it went on the ballot. That's where the problem was. There is a lot of difference between the two thousand and two and the twenty fifteen version. In fact, to me, it looks like it is a different resolution. Words have been changed, altered, added, and I don't have time to go into that. One of the things that bothers me is on the paper we were handed out at the emergency meeting has a line added which says, "And implement other public projects authorized by law." Wow, that seems like a carte blanche to me. These are the kind of things that citizens should have been able to ask and be answered and, by the way, they should have had input into those words. We weren't given these words until that meeting. We had no idea, we couldn't do any homework. Now, the Oversight Committee, we've already talked about that, the ordinance has been changed, and then there's the debt that we are all concerned about that's already been talked about. This paper is in the twenty twelve CAFR report, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And given the fact that Better Place Plan now has a big debt, which was a surprise to everybody, this is a shocker and something that can be addressed. What this says on page S thirteen of the twenty twelve CAFR, neither the Constitution of the State of Florida nor the Florida statutes has established any legal debt limitations regarding non-state tax-supporting debt. Additionally, the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners, as a local Florida government, has issued no policies to place limits on physical debt. We are going to vote no because we're not inclined to give you another piggy bank without some serious guidelines and accountability to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ms. Smith, for your comments. You are right, Putnam County is so much different since two thousand and two because of the Better Place Plan and we certainly respect your opinion. And the question is, is Putnam County better in two thousand and fifteen than we were in two thousand and two? We're not, again, that's not for your, for your opinions, we're dealing with facts today. So the truth of the whole matter is, we do have available for you some responses to your newsletter that pretty much gives individuals a false understanding of what the facts are as it relates to the debt service, as it relates to the debts that are referenced in articles that are being circulated throughout the county, dealing with the bonds. Again, please be aware of the fact that if you really want to know the facts in Putnam County, we have individuals who this is what they do every single day and oftentimes we can get involved and get part of the story and be misinformed about things, but we do have some information that is available that pretty much brings the facts to light concerning a Better Place Plan. When a person's mind is made up, you can waste all the time you want to try to persuade them or change their mind there and, and, and that, and that's, that's fine, that's the American way, but the truth of the whole matter is, I am personally looking at the plan based on what it has done and the checking balances that we do have. And so, as was said earlier, we all have differences of opinion and the good news is this, we respect those differences of opinion and we move forward as a community. This is all of the public meeting comment cards that I do have. Yes, sir.
Say one thing, the addition of the language and implement other public projects authorized by law, that was not in the two thousand and two ordinance, does not authorize the county to do anything it couldn't have done or could do currently, it didn't change, it didn't give them additional flexibility to spend the money like it wants to. It says implement other public projects authorized by law. The next sentence says state law limits the use of these revenues and it simply means the board has to continue to spend those funds in accordance with state law and its ordinance. This language gives you no greater flexibility or it doesn't allow you to do projects under the new ordinance that you could not do under the old ordinance.
Thank you, council, and again, we do know, and we, we do recognize and realize when you don't know why something is revised, then it does cause you to fill in the blanks to figure out, you know, why this is being done. And the truth of the whole matter is, we're not bragging or proud of our, us being a fiscally constrained county, but we do recognize and realize that we have to leverage funds in order to maximize, to provide what some people consider an accessory, which is actually a necessity for all of our citizens. The truth of the whole matter, the record reflects that while many here may be ad valorem taxpayers, the majority of our county is not. Therefore, the fairest tax that a community could have, and there are counties right now, even St. John's County to the north, is considering the same thing. So we're not copycats, we, we are doing the best we can to maximize the resources and help us to do better. Thank you again. We do have, again, some responses are there and I, and I hope that whether you are with Palaca Daily News, Courier Journal, Florida Times Union, Gainesville Sun, American Patriot, whomever, talk with our experts, we have them here and get the facts and then print whatever your heart desire, but get the facts and then quote your source, that's always important as well. Thanks again, that's the end of our public meeting comment cards. Any other citizens care to come forward, state your name and address for the record and we will hear you.
Morning.
John Spell, one oh six Sitcher Lane, I got a question for everybody up here, binks, we got so many professionals. I've been putting up signs on twenty and Moody and apparently somebody have the gallows to go and keep removing my signs and I would like to know who giving permission for someone to go on private property and remove my vote no for the Better Place Plan.
We have a planning director who is an expert and he may be able to shed some light.
I want to know my quick code, I see y'all got y'all's up.
We specifically received a complaint from the property owner.
Who is that?
Just let him, let him talk and you can ask questions.
I don't remember her name. Specifically with the property owner, she asked my code enforcement officers to help her take it down. I think she was ninety years old. We did so.
Okay, that was just one location?
Yes.
Okay, just, hold on, Mr. Spell, are you saying that signs are being removed in, in various places throughout the county?
No, they've been, being removed where I just went and paid the property tax. So I don't know who the ninety-year-old person he's talking, wait a minute, let me think.
Well, apparently we're talking about two different locations.
No.
Okay, Mr. Spell is speaking and if everybody else will listen.
But you keep cutting me off. It's right there on Moody and twenty where y'all wanted to put the sidewalk. I went and put signs up, they removed them, I went back, put signs up and put no trespassing on them and they moved it. Now, I interrogated my, both of my aunts about did they give anybody permission?
Let me ask you one question, Mr. Spell, did you call the Putnam County Sheriff's Department and file a complaint?
No.
That needs to happen.
Okay.
Because it is against the law for a person to come on private property and remove signs.
Okay, my next question is, how can just Joe Blow out of the blue moon come up and say, "I want some signs moved" because if that's the case, I'm gonna call him and have him to remove the signs from in front of your business. You just can't do that, but I paid the property taxes on that and with that no trespassing on there with the sign, they came back and removed them also. Now, anyone know that I'm a spell just as well as the rest of them that's on that property, but just keep coming there removing even on seventeen at the cow pasture, I noticed somebody took one of the signs down, the wind didn't blow it down and throwed it in the cow pasture, but I know the cows didn't take it down to read it. But this whole political thing, you know, is just a dirty game because I see that everybody are starting to put vote your ass up. I respect that, I leave them, I want the same respect when I put something up, leave it there, but when you leave off the roadway and go onto property to remove it and then say someone just called and had you to remove them, I don't find that really appropriate because I interrogated my aunts and they said they didn't know nothing about it. So whoever he's talking about, you know, I don't know who in the world it could be.
Mr. Spell, my.
Just, just one minute, Mr. Pellicier. Be assured that there is a law.
I know.
Against moving signs unless those signs are in violation of right-of-way or unless those signs are on someone else's property. I'm not sure that you're talking about the same location.
We talking about the same location.
And if you are, please contact the Putnam County Sheriff's Department and talk with whomever else and I'm sure that the, the public complaint there, it's, it's, it's a part of the process. There is no person that's authorized by this county commission to go out and move signs. There was a gentleman just last week that was working for a candidate for sheriff in Duval County and he ended up.
In jail.
Okay, so again, it's not a joke, we take it serious, we take it serious that our citizens have an opinion about the Better Place Plan and you're entitled to that, you're entitled to that. So let's, let you and our director have the discussion, find out whether it is the exact same location that he's speaking of and then let's find out what actually happened because we don't need, or, or, or people who are for the plan or taking no signs down, we don't need people who are against the plan taking yes signs down because that's not the American way. And we're all citizens and I think when you get down to the bottom line, I hear our citizens saying, "We want a, an improved quality of life in Putnam County, we just have different avenues that we think we need to travel to get there." And so let's, let's get along and let's move us forward and we can do that. So will you have that conversation, please, sir?
Well, I don't really, I just need to go talk to the Sheriff's Department because if he's admitting that he had permission from the property owner to go and remove it, then I'll let him and the Sheriff's Department handle that because I can go to my aunt's house and get with her and then all, all of us can go out there and then they can go from there.
Let your aunt make a statement concerning what she may have given permission for or what she haven't given.
She didn't know nothing about it, I asked her in church Sunday.
Code enforcement, they are deputized, they know what to do, they know how to do it, our Sheriff's Department, again, they are not for one or against one, they are very impartial as it relates to political issues and so please do that, Mr. Spell.
All right, I got another beef with you, Mr. Flag. All right, you supposed to be my mouthpiece, if I was in court, you would be supposed to be my lawyer, but you put me in a situation as this, I got a public defender because I've been on you about that ditch and that water running over and then I was referred by someone else to get a number. I don't feel like it's my responsibility to have a problem and I got the contact to stay on cleaning those ditches to keep all that nasty water from running on my property. It's more like, you know, you said at that river keeper's ordeal with Jacksonville, that that was your house, that's your house. I shouldn't have to go and speak for myself because if that's the case, then that chair need to be, you know, empty, but if I got a problem, I should be able to come and put it in your hands and don't have to put my hands back on it. But if I got to stir it up and take it from you and run with it and bring it back to you, then you're just useless.
Thank you, Mr. Spell. Truth of the whole matter is, when you put something in someone's hand, you put it in their care, you do have to leave it alone, long enough.
It came back to me.
You think it did. I have in front of me this morning a list of the items that you have brought not only to my attention, but you brought to the attention of this commission, you brought to the attention of Public Works and there is a status report, maybe you don't have it yet, there, but there is nothing that you are bringing to our attention that's falling on deaf ears.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, my point is, after I talked to you.
Yes, sir.
At the last meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, your guy, he went and did his research, y'all said y'all had a workshop meeting and all, but then it was referred to me, there was a number that I could call. You see my point? If I bring it to you, I don't want to have to put my hands back on it, but I'm hoping that you could get it resolved of them cleaning that dish because that contaminated water is actually contaminating the, the whole area. But if it comes back to me to handle it again, I might as well cap it in my hand from the beginning. beginning.
Mr. Spell, you have to make those choices, this is my first time hearing that you were given a number, uh, since our last meeting, and call me, sir. Do you have this update of, uh, some of the concerns that you...
I got a bunch of them papers there on the dashboard, but my main thing is getting to...
Do you have this one, the newest one?
No, I don't have that one.
Let me share this with you, and please, call me or any one of us, uh, for follow-up. This is your...
Okay, well, I want something done because I can't...
Well, we all want something done, and thank you so much for bringing those concerns to us.
All right.
All right, sir, any other public comments? Close the public comments section of the meeting, we will move now to the consent agenda. Before I read the list of consent agenda items, I ask District One, do you have anything that you want pulled for discussion?
No.
District Two?
I have none.
District Four?
None.
District Five?
I have none.
Consent agenda consists of, A, list of committee minutes, recommendation distributed to become part of the record, B, list of correspondence distributed to become part of the record, C, finance, list of unclaimed monies prior to January two thousand and fourteen, proof of publication, D, Sheriff's Department, Florida Department of Law Enforcement, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program residual fund application for the purchase of a Rapid ID device to allow electronic sex offender registration, the amount of two thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars, E, Information Technology Spring, two thousand and fifteen rural E-nine-one-one annual grant application in the amount of seventy-four thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifteen cent to fund annual maintenance costs for the E-nine-one-one system, solar calm router in the backup PSAP, F, Public Works, Florida Department of Environmental Protection Contract, two hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-five cent in reference to the Dunn's Creek Entrance Road Stabilization Project, Putnam County is acting as the DEP's contractor. G, Emergency Services Modification Number Two, the Florida Division of Emergency Management Subgrant, extending the expiration date through June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen for administrative closeout. H, Chamber of Commerce, Tourist Development Council Recommendations for March eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen. I, Amendment to Lease Agreement with Farm Service Agency for USDA Service Office for two thousand four hundred and two square feet at the one-eleven Yavington Road, East Willacca, uh, location through December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Entertainer motion to approve the consent agenda presented.
So moved.
Second motion and a second, further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, so, Tim Ho, you're back on.
Gone.
I think he just walked out.
Okay, all right, um, we will, uh, if someone will just, um, let him know that he's, he's, he's up, uh...
Would you see if he's up, thank you.
Item seven, uh, Ms. Mary Kay Engelking, uh, has requested that, uh, the comments that she need to make, uh, be presented, um, at the, uh, afternoon, uh, workshop meeting, and we respectfully, um, will, um, will grant her that request, thank you so much. Our county administrator, as it relates to appointments, Value Adjustment Board?
Yes, sir, it's just time for the board to begin to give thought to, uh, appointments to be made to that particular board.
Okay, uh, Commissioners, you have the two thousand and fifteen Appointment Recommendation for the Value Adjustment Board, which consists of two Commissioners and a citizen. The incumbents are Commissioner Flag, Commissioner Pellicier, and Mr. Rudd Jones, but it's your pleasure.
Those are the ones that are recommended to serve again?
Well, it's just, not necessarily a recommendation, but it is the current...
Or our regular protocol, don't you agree? In election years, we take Commissioners that are up for election off the Value Adjustment Board and put two on that are not up for reelection.
Okay.
With that being said, I'll be proud to serve again
Okay.
in that capacity.
We have, um, Chip Lible, and, uh...
I'd be, I'd be willing to serve, sir.
Okay, Mr. Harvey, Mr. Lible, and the citizen.
I don't have one yet, Mr. Chair.
I don't have one.
I think Mr. Jones, if he's able, would be willing to do it again, I can say that, uh, but he's got a new job, that he's traveling the state, and I need to... with him before I, uh, make that appointment.
Okay, so, do you wanna do the commission party, wanna hold off and do the whole thing?
Whatever your pleasure is, it'll be fine, we got time.
Okay, if you will share, uh, with, uh, Ms. Tabitha, um, the recommendations, then we'll take that issue up.
See, with the Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to go ahead and do the commission, there are some...
Okay.
The board needs to have a meeting, um, and appoint counsel, and there's some matters that need to be taken care of.
Okay, thank you very kindly, this board takes, uh, when does it actually take effect? Is it July or...
I'm not sure, I don't have, I don't work with that, it's ruled by statute.
It's in the fall.
Okay, well, we'll, 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 we'll get the specific date, but we have a recommendation, um, at least we have a willing, a willing participant, uh, two willing participants, uh, there are Commissioner Lible and Commissioner Harvey, entertain a motion for...
So moved.
We have a second motion and a second, to appoint Commissioner Harvey, Commissioner Lible to the Value Adjustment Board, and, um, further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very kindly, we will move back now, uh, Mr. Tim Ho is back, and he has a project that he has been working on, page fifty-six in your packet.
Patiently, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Everything's a project, and I, I apologize you had such a long list, I thought I could go get a copy from Mr. Glass and that other thing. Um, I have a dog, I'm retired now, dog takes me on a walk every day, sometimes twice, and just one little, uh, loop around, it's about a mile. And I got tired of seeing these things in driveways, occupied, unoccupied. I picked up a few, took pictures if you want them, where they all came, there's a whole new flock of them out there now, if you want, I can get you another bag.
Wow.
But I saw this Pete Putnam beautiful flyer, which...
Yes, sir.
Yeah?
We do have.
On the, uh, back flyer, it says, "State of Florida Statute four oh three dot four one three, littering is a crime, it's a misdemeanor for anybody to dump litter on private property without a landowner's consent." It seems to me that it's putrifying my part of Putnam County. Obviously, it's not with landowners' consent, or they'd pick it up before it becomes mulch. It does work pretty good to help the post office guy when he drives in, when there's a bunch of them, right by the mailbox, 'cause it lifts, you know, but other than that, it's not really socially redeeming, and I just thought I'd bring it to your attention, and I realize people are making money off of this, but it's ugly, so, do you have...
Mr. Hammond? You come forward for a moment, please. Have you received any complaints recently? I know this, uh, publication, uh, shows up everywhere, and it shows up at vacant homes, um, as well as disinterested, uh, homes, uh, there, and so, Mr. Tim Ho is bringing it to our attention, do you have any suggestions as it relates to code enforcement, or what jurisdiction do we have on that?
Yeah, we have never received a complaint on these, I mean, it's usually left to the property owner to pick them up.
Okay.
But again, there are vacant properties, um, yeah, we've never prosecuted a case on this.
Okay, so, uh, I'm sure we can send a nice little letter to Penny Saver, I think that's one of the publications, is it others?
With all due respect, um, it's a business model that's in violation of state law.
Okay.
They don't have authority, unless they have a signature from somebody, they don't have authority to deposit that on any land.
Okay, all right, well, again, uh, I think it would be appropriate for it to be addressed, and, um, it's a part of the minutes now, you got the proof with you, and, um, I've got the proof in my neighborhood as well, uh, and we'll, we'll take it from there. You can just give that to Mr. Gas, he's going that way. Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can I say? Tim?
Mr. Tim Ho? Don't leave yet.
I have a comment for you, I, I appreciate it, I have gotten some complaints about that, I have not turned them over to Code Enforcement, I do apologize. Uh, I do appreciate you coming, 'cause I often wanted to fill up my truck myself and stand out there and throw them back. Um, if I wanna subscribe to something, I want it, I'll put a mailbox out there, put a receptacle that somebody can put, but I feel the same way, I hate picking up trash in front of my house that I didn't do, and it just really bothers me, but I wanna say thank you personally for coming down to do that.
Okay, thank you very kindly, item nine, County Attorney, Rest Councilman.
No report, sir.
Our Clerk of Court, Mr. Honorable Tim Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have no items today.
Okay. District One. Any closing comments?
I have no reports, um...
District Two?
I just encourage everyone to attend the county fair, particularly the four-H and, and, uh, buyer's programs for the steer and hog programs, uh, this Thursday and Friday night, those kids need our help, FFA, I couldn't think of it, and the...
Four-H.
Four-H. Okay, District Four.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I am working on a few things, and I'd just like to bring it to the attention of the public. On March thirtieth at six o'clock, I will be back at the Edgar Johnson's, oh, I'll be at the Edgar Johnson Senior Center to give information on the Better Place Plan at six o'clock, April first at QI Roberts School in Flora Home to do the same informational meeting, and April second in Melrose, at the Melrose Library to do the same, um, also. And, uh, just wanna thank you for the opportunity to go out and present the facts as we've been instruct, or, you know, as we can do, thank you.
Thank you so much, District Five.
Um, I will be doing the same on the thirtieth, um, in Crescent City, um, unless Commissioner Harris is gonna be able to fill that seat.
Um, I was planning on it.
Are you? Okay, okay.
Okay, at the library, right?
Thought you were doing the other one. On the thirty-first, I'll be at the, uh, one of the Kiwanis Clubs, I don't know, there's about three of them in town, um, on the thirty-first. Um, this Thursday at the Putnam County Fair, um, this, all proceeds, uh, support Road Heavers Boys Ranch, I encourage everybody to come over and get a chicken dinner, uh, they have drive-through, and, or you can come in the fair and dine there, but, uh, all the proceeds go to a very worthy cause, to help those, uh, boys who are in need, thank you.
Thank you very kindly, Administrator, did you have anything else?
No, sir.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Recession, recess.
Recession?
You have an executive session.
Oh, thank you. Let's make sure that the record reflect that, uh, we're taking an eight-minute recess, and we do have a ten-thirty executive session. It's on the bottom.
Okay, I did see that, I'm sorry.
Thank you.